Our Brookshire Economic Development Corporation meeting. Notice is hereby given of a special meeting of the Brookshire Economic Development Corporation to be a Wednesday, January eighth, twenty twenty-five at five thirty in the city chambers of the Brookshire Municipal Building, forty twenty-nine Fifth Street, Brookshire, Texas, for the purpose of considering the following agenda items. Can we have a prayer? Prayer.
Father, we'd just like to thank you for this opportunity, Father God, that you allowed and you presented upon us. Father, we ask that you continue being a blessing not only upon us but for this city, Father. Father, we ask that you acknowledge us with wisdom and knowledge. And we ask that the decisions and everything that we discuss on today, Father God, be not only for the betterment of this city, but for also be pleasing upon you. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Amen, thank you. And now the pledge to the U.S. flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now can we have a roll call by our secretary, Ms. Vicki?
President Eric Green, Vice President, which I should stand?
Present.
Secretary Robert Fisher.
Present.
Director Linne Odie.
Present.
Director Lynn Stan.
Present.
Director Ms. Maria.
Thank, thank you. Alrighty, and number five, we have public comments, and at this time, no one has signed in. Next thing on our agenda is gonna be consent agenda. A is gonna be approval of the EDC meeting minutes from December fifth, twenty twenty-four. And then also B, if you wanna discuss December financial reports.
I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda items, A and B.
Second.
I have questions. Before we approve, I have questions.
On which one?
On the financial.
Okay, go ahead.
On the financial report.
Make sure you're speaking to the mic so they can hear you.
So, I have a couple of questions. On the transactions, I see credit card transactions, but I don't see any check numbers. So my question is, are these payments being made by direct transfers? If there's no check numbers?
Yes, credit card payments go on the credit card, and then we pay the credit card bill. But in our account form in our management system, each item that is paid for on the credit card has to be broken out and posted individually. And how I designate the difference between the regular invoice that we're paying, like say I had to pay Mr. Ash, I put a C.C. in front of it to denote that it's a credit card, and we do have receipt backups. The ionist charges are auto-directed on the credit card, and that is the management company that handles the website.
So, my question is, the C.C. is for the credit cards?
Yes.
The transaction that doesn't have check numbers, are those direct transfers?
And the other?
All the other payments that don't have any check numbers, are they direct transfers?
Yes.
And the next question that I have is on the expense report, on the, the statement that has, I think it's the line item with the salary. Is that, is the budget, is it just for one person? Does it include Ms. Guti, or how many? Okay. Okay, so it's for one person?
Ms. Castro.
That's all the questions I have.
I mean, I don't know, I do apologize. We did have a question last month concerning an expenditure for Christmas. Is that something we would address with you, or is this Erica issue? I'm sorry?
Was it the EDC expenditure?
The Christmas lights?
It was what, nine, eight thousand or nine thousand?
Yeah, we went through legal weigh-in on that, and the city purchased, in the past, it was our understanding, we found out this year, the city rented Christmas lights instead of purchasing them. It's much more expensive to do it that way than to own your lights and store them, and then pay someone to put them up every year. So the city invested in citywide lights, and we checked legal on, on the billing and how they divided up. And the EDC is allowed to pay for a portion of that because it was the downtown Highway Ninety, which is an improvement, so that is the line item that it is coming from.
Okay. And just, I guess for me, for clarification, is that something that we had to approve, or is that something, who, cuz we didn't budget for it, we didn't?
There is money in the budget on that line item for downtown improvements, so it wasn't outside the scope of the budget, and the lights were approved to be purchased.
I wouldn't see that improvement, I would see that as a beautification.
It's a downtown.
You're not improving nothing, you're not improving anything, you're just decorating.
It's, it's a downtown improvement according to the attorney.
Basically, that, that's just the line item that it falls underneath.
That's just the line item.
Yeah. Right, right, right.
That's where we're legally allowed to put it, it's downtown improvements.
Okay, so the, that didn't have to come and get approved through us? You guys were able to approve that and remove those funds from the EDC? Okay, so do we need to budget next time for additional?
Well, now that they've purchased, that's what she says, now, now that they have purchased the lights, we won't have to buy them next year.
Next year, putting out Christmas lights should be just paying someone to string them up and then take them down, which, and if I had to hazard a guess, probably five thousand, six thousand total for this.
And I think there's, I think the city guys actually put those lights up, so that was.
That was gonna be.
Has that come this year? Okay, okay.
Okay, so again, my question is, do we need to budget for that five thousand, cuz we had not talked about that at all?
It, well, it, it comes under the line items. You don't necessarily budget for each specific expenditure, you budget for downtown improvements. It encompasses a whole plethora of things.
Okay.
You don't wanna get bogged down in, okay, this is gonna be Christmas lights as a line item. You don't wanna do that because it just bogs your, your budget down and makes it too specific. So you have your line items as a lot of categories, and what falls under those categories is the budget.
Okay.
So if, if the attorneys approved it, I guess we can verify with them.
There's email backups, I can send it to you.
Okay.
Cuz it linked, you just wanted it then, and all that, so.
Okay.
So, there, there's one more thing. Last meeting, I asked for invoices. Did we talk to Ms. Guti about the invoices?
I think that was up for discussion tonight on, actually, number nine, with the, to fall in with the monthly reports.
Okay.
Alright, so we're good with?
Okay, so.
Make a motion, I made the motion to approve the consent agenda items, A and B.
And I second it.
Okay, alright, motion carries. Uh, moving on to item number seven, discussing possible.
Do it all in favor.
Oh, I'm, I'm so sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No oppose? Alright, motion carries, thank you. Alright, number seven, discussing possible action regarding repairs to Hovis Park Ball Field.
Right. So, I know at, at our last council meeting, we made a lot of progress with Hovis Park, but there's still some outstanding things that, that, that need to be done. I know there was approved to purchase a freezer and also cabinets. And I think Mr. Jenkins, the youth director's here, I would like to ask him to come up to the mic to kinda talk this about it. How you doing today, Mr. Jenkins?
I'm doing great, how about you all?
Good, good, good. So could you give us an update on the Hovis Park, are they, did you get the freezer there yet?
It wasn't there yesterday when I stopped through, no, it was the lockers. The lockers that's there is what we purchased for the concession stand ourselves, those three lockers that's to the right when you walk in.
Okay.
But the lockers that I sent you before and the freezer, no, it wasn't there as of yesterday about five o'clock.
Okay. So, Ms. Guti, I think you had that information, was approved, and was good with the Public Works Director?
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk to Clint tomorrow. And see, I know we, we, we had our, one of our tech companies go out today and Clint and Erica were out there with them, and we're surveying for cameras since we lost the leeches before we install other expensive equipment out there. We wanna make sure we can secure it, and we need to get some locks updated, so I will find out where we're on that, and I'll get a timeline, I'll have Clint send you a timeline on the possibility of, you know, when are we finished. A camera guy did, did a survey. I had to hazard a guess, it'll be about another month before he did all the cameras installed.
Okay, but the, the freezer and the cabinets are locked, they're, they're inside, so, so hopefully we can get that before a month. What about the dugout top, cuz I think we had mentioned that Public Works will be able to do that work?
Yes, I'm not sure where they are on that.
Could you check please for us? And the roll-up door is the other thing.
Yeah, Clint said that the roll-up door works.
It's only one roll-up door that does not work, it's offline. It's the one to the far right that we always keep down, but I did ask for a roll-up door to go for the back, because the back door is really not secured with a two-by-four. I can basically walk up to the door and pull it off if I wanted to. So the thing about that was one of the other things that I requested when we was out there speaking with.
To install one new roll-up door?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
It's one of the new ones for the back entry, and then the other roll-up door is for the access to the concession area. It's off-track.
So that one just needs to be fixed?
It needs to be fixed, and he said he could do that.
Yeah, I think they fixed that, I think they did fix that, cuz Clint said.
It wasn't fixed when I went out there.
Really?
I was out there yesterday.
Okay. Okay.
I will get Clint, does Clint have your number?
Yes, he does, and I have his.
I will get him to call you, and I guess it's, we're trying to play a telephone, I thought we were just preparing, I didn't know we were getting installation of the roll-up.
Well, that's what I mentioned to him.
Okay.
He might have just went with the other roll-up door that's off-track. It was him and another gentleman that was there when was walking through with some of the things that I was showing him that need immediately fixed.
Okay.
And the last thing is the ball, the ball fields. And so, I don't know if it's Public Works, maybe someone went out and scraped the grass off one of the fields, completely ticked it all off, right?
Right, someone went out, and what they did is that they re-sent the, the big field, and instead of taking a scalpel, they used a butcher knife, and it's really messed up. I don't know if they brought dirt on top of it, but it's the wrong dirt. We have gotten together with a couple of other vendors that could fix that, but the thing about it, no one followed up with me to find out who they needed to purchase, I mean, who they need to get in contact to have those things done correctly.
So is that dirt brought out there?
I don't know, it was, I, I don't know, it looked like it's on top, they could've, they could've re-fluffed it, I, I don't know, but it's not clay.
I'll have Clint call you. We talked about that in our department head meeting this morning, too. And I, I don't work in that department, so I'm just, anyway, we couldn't discuss in our department yet, so.
Yeah, someone went out there and started working.
Yeah, well, that field didn't supposed to be for a girl's infield, what they did, it took all the dirt out. That's supposed to been done like the boys' high school baseball field. The other field, when you first come in to the left, that's field number one, that was the field that all the infield grass is supposed to be taken off, and we're supposed to put down the rock dirt for, for the infield. They never touched that.
I will have Clint call you.
Please, yeah.
Yeah, it does sound like a Clint issue.
You and Clint and Erica on the books, so Erica's informed.
Who's Erica?
Erica's the senior secretary.
Okay.
And so, what about the turf field? That, that field is, is it, last we, we met out there, there's special equipment, specialized equipment to maintain that field.
Yes, it is.
And there was grass growing up into the turf. And I understand it's gonna be very expensive if it's not maintained.
That is true. You can get about fifteen to twenty more years off that turf field if you maintain it, even though that's some of the things, since we haven't maintained it in the last five years, but you can still get fifteen to twenty years out of it if you use the last equipment, get the proper equipment. It'll cost, say, less than twenty thousand dollars, which when they had get you all a bit of a contract, it's gonna cost you forty thousand. Only thing you have to end up providing is the material to end up to, uh, de-sanitize it, re-scrave it, and things of that nature for the turf field itself. And then you have to end up doing for the outfield, because we have ants growing, we have, I mean, it's, it's in bad shape right now, cuz nobody's doing anything to it.
So just, just so, just so we understand, you're saying if the city purchased the equipment for tw- proxy, maybe twenty thousand, that we could do, we could do that ourselves?
You can do it yourself, and I'm willing to even pitch in at no cost to help and teach whoever's gonna be in charge of how to do it, you know? And, but that, that's what we really need, because it's going to waste right now.
Yeah. Yeah, if you, if you could get him to contact with Mr. Jenkins, cuz he knows exactly what needs to be done to those fields, and it's a nice park, and I, and I think if we get it, if we get it the way it should be, you know, with a lot of different people can enjoy it, and different agencies come from outside to play ball there, doing spring ball and volleyball, right? Is that correct?
That's correct, we had rented it out one time for, for a league adult slow pitch league. It was full, you know, people had a good time out there.
Okay.
You know, but one of the things we might, what they end up doing is get a slump pump, still need it badly.
What's that?
Slump pump.
Oh, sump pump, yeah. They did add the gravel though, right?
They did do the gravel.
Okay.
But now we have to end up pulling some of that gravel up, cuz we didn't do the slump pump.
Yeah.
That's if you're gonna do it, you gotta draw the water off the turf field, cuz the turf field is holding water, and what's gonna happen is it's gonna rot.
Or it does.
Yes.
Is there anything else?
Well, I did, it's a whole bunch of things, but I just.
Well, we just, you know, get the low-hanging, the major things first.
Right.
And, and then, you know, and kinda move on from there. Alright, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
So, I'm assuming this is gonna be a no action? We don't need to vote on anything?
I think Ms. Guti has notes written down to get with Clint and all that, so basically no action.
Okay. Agenda item number eight, discussing possible action set in budget, date, time, and location for the twenty twenty-five Business Mixer. Um, I know we talked about this at the last meeting, and Ms. Vicki has graciously provided us some possible locations, unfortunately it's not in y'all packet, I'm sorry. So we can pass them around to you all, and some examples of what the city has done. What the city has done and budgeted for in the, I'm sorry, what the EDC has done and budgeted for in the past. I know we talked about date-wise, looking at March, that allow us time to send out notifications and, and get our location locked in. I'm leaning towards the Convention Center as the first one, but if you guys have any other networking people that can offer us a decent price, we're willing to check them out.
The Convention Center would be, we could save, save money, right?
I agree, it would be free since it's, it's a city event, it would, we had no cost.
Sound good to me.
So typically, is this, what, twenty to twenty, I see here, twenty to twenty-four people? Ms., Ms. Vicki? Ms. Castro?
Normally, that's how many show up, twenty, twenty-four?
Businesses.
Businesses show, okay, not people.
Businesses.
Businesses.
Or vendors.
Okay. Okay, that was the last one, okay, yeah.
Well, just a question, since the last one was that G-Tech, was there a cost, how did that, okay? Okay, so just something else to think about?
I was thinking a Thursday evening, about six o'clock? At least I know people start doing their own stuff.
We'll give you time, you know, getting off of work, the average person gets off at four or five, so that'll give you time to.
So Thursday around six, okay.
Six to eight?
Six to eight would be good. I don't have a set date just yet, but we're definitely shooting for March. Know what, spring break is.
Spring break will start on this, well, we'll get out that Friday, the seventh, March the seventh.
The seventh through the.
Definitely not that week.
Eleven, no, yeah, no, not that week.
Do you want me to go around a little bit for that calendar?
Oh, that would be great.
Yes.
Perfect.
Yeah.
We can go ahead and, and lock down a date. Thank you, thank you.
Twenty-seventh should be around the FFA show.
Oh, in March?
The last, the last week of March, I believe.
So then, yeah, that won't be a good.
I wanna say, yeah.
The one with the parade and everything, right? Okay, so not.
So, yeah, not the last week.
Not that.
It's maybe that week before, which would be the twentieth? The capital spring break, so yeah, the twentieth.
March twentieth.
But that would be awesome. I see the council meeting night, though, third, Thursday.
Or maybe we can move to a Wednesday?
Yeah, yeah, so won't be no conflict.
Yeah, we definitely don't wanna get in the way of city council, so maybe the nineteenth, March nineteenth? Let's see if we got dates available.
Okay.
What about, I'm sorry, Wednesday?
Oh, no, there's nothing.
Nothing in March yet? Okay.
March nineteenth.
March nineteenth, at the Convention Center. Tentative date.
Is there anybody to put it on there?
Yes, please. Tentative?
The week after, uh, spring.
Spring break, yes.
The week after the spring break, and we didn't wanna do it the following Thursday because of the city council meeting, so.
The nineteenth is the.
Wednesday. We will work on that. But if y'all have anyone in mind, let me know, and we can reach out to them for a special.
Ms. Vicki, what about the CEO of G-Tech, since? Just so I want to reach out to, since we had the opportunity to use his facility for the last event, so maybe it would be a perfect opportunity for him to be able to do a presentation and, cuz I know also, he has like three different businesses inside of it.
Would we reach out to him?
So that would be perfect.
Oh, even better.
Yeah.
Reach out to him.
You'll reach out to him? Okay, great.
Okay.
So March nineteenth again is our tentative date, Wednesday, March nineteenth, from six P.M. to eight P.M. As for now, we're looking at the Convention Center. If something change, we will update everyone.
Alright.
Any questions, thoughts?
I don't know.
Okay, could we take, we take action on this, or?
So.
Oh, no, we didn't set a budget, no.
I just saw that in the line.
No, no, it's okay. So, I don't know, I hadn't thought about a budget.
We'll start.
We're definitely gonna save by using the Convention Center, so that's, if, if that's the route we go with the Convention Center, so mostly it'll be just pretty much food and beverages.
Ms. Vicki, how much in the past for refreshments and?
The menu.
That'll cater.
I think about maybe, maybe twenty-five hundred, three thousand dollars should do it. Yeah, and we shouldn't, you know, we'll be conservative, conservative about what we do, yeah.
But we can set the amount, not, not exceed.
Not to exceed three grand, three thousand.
Sound good to me? Thank you, sweetie.
This is a side note, we did Thanksgiving lunch for all the staff this year for Olive Garden, and it was a little over five hundred dollars.
Really?
Okay.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah.
Olive Garden.
Yeah, cuz it's tax-free.
Adrianicafe is a really good place, too.
And they deliver.
Oh, good.
So, you know, just.
Thank you, I'll write them down. I'm gonna do Adrianicafe, too, they were good. Awesome, great. Okay, so, do we need to take action, or?
Put a motion. I make a motion that we set a tentative date for March the nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, with a tentative, tentative time being from six P.M. to eight P.M. Location will be the Brookshire Convention Center.
I said, okay.
Oh, and, uh, if, I always call it a food or appetizer amount, not to exceed twenty-five hundred.
Three thousand.
Three thousand, like that would be enough.
I second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, agenda item number nine, discuss updates on monthly reports. Director Stan.
Board, I think where we wanted to discuss on, for the monthly reports was the financials, I think also that's what she was wanting to see on tonight. Ms. Guti, I think our question was gonna be just for the October and November financial reports, financial statements, financial reports or reconsiderations.
Okay, do you have a specific question?
Just for the, for the month, cuz we didn't, last month, we didn't receive anything, so we were just, well, we received for December, but we were talking about for October, yes, just December, December first through the thirty-first, we haven't received anything for October and November.
Vicki, did we not do?
Well, for this packet, we just have December.
Are you talking about the invoices?
Well, yes.
Are you talking about the invoices?
Just invoices.
Yeah, just the invoices.
I guess just for, for my certification, the, the financials reflect the invoices that come in, and, and just.
Can, can you come speak in the mic so that we can hear you?
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure.
The reports reflect the payments that are made based on invoices that come in. So I guess my, my question is, or curiosity is, if, if I'm not paying anything unless I get an invoice, and it's already on the reports that you all get, I guess I'm wondering why you need invoices? And the other part of this is, I get an invoice in, and I make the payments, and then they all get filed away, so, and I, I get, literally, I process A.P. So, um, and I, I get, literally I process A P, which is accounts payable twice a month. And my stack twice a month is this big for the city and E D C all payments. So I process the payments. Get them all organized, and then they're all filed, so I guess I'm wondering why.
So, let me just, let me just go ahead and clarify, so when we get the financial report. I guess what we're all asking is the backups to the financial report, and to me, that would be invoice, bank statement, ledger. We just need to see the transactions.
I can get, bank statements would be.
We haven't gotten a bank statement in these packets, I think the last time it may have been the budget meeting or the budget workshop.
I'll, I'll make myself a list that, cause I, Vicki emails me and says, I need this and this and this, I go, okay, and I get it off to her. So, I can make a point of making sure y'all have the bank statement.
It just makes things much simpler.
And if there's ever a specific question, um, I guess my hesitancy a little bit about. Doing the invoice thing is because I have so many things in front of me at that time that, and I, I get them email, I print them. I file the email, it's just not readily available to actually get the invoice and, and use it as a backup. Because it could be three weeks go by, and then, oh, there's an E D C meeting. So I guess if you have a specific question on the financials and you want to see a specific invoice, it's always here.
So.
I know in the past, we've had, um, that's just naturally came to, so maybe that's why we're starting to question, because we have stopped.
Stop, yes.
Since, I guess with this new system that y'all have, but in the past, we've always had invoices, receipts, copies, everything that. Explains more in detail, so we, we wouldn't have to constantly ask you guys. So maybe if that's something, you can just provide an extra copy on the E D C side, I don't know if that, that extra work to do that.
It is, honestly, it's, it's a lot, and I'm, I'm one person now wearing, you know, a ton of hats.
So, would it be easier just to include a bank statement in with this financial report? I think that would probably, um, cover the whole thing, because then we can see the transactions and we don't have to worry about an invoice. To back up any of these transactions.
And, and honestly, like I said, nothing, no money goes out of the city for any kind of payment unless I have an invoice. And it has an invoice, and it says, this must be paid by this date.
Okay.
So if I don't have an invoice, you're not getting any money. So, I mean, I've had vendors send over an estimate, are you gonna pay that? No, because it doesn't say invoice, so. Bottom line, if I don't have an invoice, it's not gonna get paid, so anything you see that's being paid, definitely has an invoice to go along with it.
And I trust, we trust you on that, but just even like the example of the Christmas thing, all we all saw was the line item that said Christmas nineteen-eight-hundred dollars. And we're like, okay, well, what is this?
Okay, yeah, and that, that was a little different because the invoices came in, it was all together. And they got filed under that vendor's name, and I had to divide them up, so on things like that, and with the festivals. Um, and that's a city thing, but, you know, uh, everything gets filed in one packet now. So I have invoices per, because it all gets filed under the vendor name, so.
Yes.
Anytime you have a question or wanna see something, just shoot me an email, and I'll be more than happy to, you know, get the invoice and send it off. So, like the, the ion, the Iona stuff is an automatic draft on the credit card, it's just easier to pay it that way. Um, a lot of things are, are all E F T. Because it's easier than, than doing the checks, it's easier on our side, we don't have the paper trail, I don't worry about checks getting lost in the mail. Um, so.
So maybe that may be it, we're doing a lot of just auto drafting, so that's why we're not getting.
And E D C doesn't have a whole lot of transactions, I mean, really not, you know.
Okay, so, if there's a, uh, specific. Question, because the invoice will definitely show the breakdown of, of, of what was charged, like for instance, Mr. Ish's hours.
Yes.
Will be breaking, broke down on there, you know, uh, different things like that.
Yeah, so, is that, is that satisfactory?
I, I have, I have a question about the, uh, the financials. Some of the line items are still not populating. Like, uh, current month, P E D C coordinator for current month expenses is not populating. The salaries, I think this is the same thing from last month.
Mr. Esch is not paid from B E D C coordinator, he is paid out of professional services.
Okay, so. Yeah, well. Current year budget seventy thousand, I see. I see his contract total amount here.
That's professional.
Cause he doesn't make that.
Well, this is the line item that it's coming out of, cause this, this one has a one and, yeah, these should not be in here.
I think professional services, engineering.
No.
Okay, but.
These budget line items right here with the one, two, three, and a four, they should not be populating at all, I need to get with.
Well, then this number's in the wrong place then. Because he makes more than, yearly more than that.
Yeah, I'll have to look at that with Nicola and, uh, our accountant, and either move it or, cause these should not be. These are not accurate account numbers, line item numbers, they all are line item numbers, and then the zero.
Okay, and so.
Don't have any number.
Uh, professional services is zero for the current month.
For the current month expense, but year-to-date expense.
So we didn't do anything for the current month?
Um, I'm not sure how his payment fell, but the year-to-date is there.
Yeah, it's year-to-date, what I'm talking about, for this is, these financials are for December, right? So we didn't, he didn't have any expenses for December?
No, not before I printed this.
Okay, okay, and then what about the?
Here is what is actually printed or inputted specifically right there, that date and time. So, Mr. Esch, I had his invoice come in after I printed this for you, so it'll show up.
Okay, and then, uh, like Ms., uh, Castro's salary.
Yes, I'm still, I have to work on that with Nicola, we need to transfer her salary from E D C. To, uh, the city.
Right, health insurance.
Yeah, that too, we're, um, slowly getting.
Charity contributions, also, so you're still working this report?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm still working on that, Nicola, there's just a lot of other things.
I noticed the city side's done, it's populating, from what I understand, yeah, for this one, okay.
There's certain things that we're trying to work on and get, get squared away.
Okay, thank you.
There's just other fires that have had to get put out.
Thank you, Stacy. Okay, so no action on this one?
No action.
Number nine, okay. Alright, agenda item number ten, discuss impossible action setting date for a strategic plan workshop.
No action at the moment for that as well.
Alrighty, number eleven, E D C coordinators' report, Mr. Ish.
Um, let's go turn this on.
Is it on?
I don't know, but I, I can project. Good evening, um, in your packet is a summary memo that talks, gives an update on a number of items, a couple of things I would highlight for you. Uh, at our last meeting, you asked me to do a couple of things. One, you asked me to meet with G-Tech, which I, I promptly forgot about until, um, board member Richards called me and said, have you done this? And I apologized profusely and immediately, immediately went out there and I had a tour, um, met Andy, first time I, I met him. And as it indicated, he, and, and you're aware, he's looking to expand, uh, so that's in there. I'd also point to, uh, the Christ Clinic, which was an interesting, um, conversation, they reached out to me. As they describe in there, it's an organization that's been around for nearly twenty-five years, uh, they're head, they're in Katy area. And it's interesting, I think they could provide some value, they are a, a nonprofit charity hospital. Their focus in the area is to help individuals who are on the lower end of the income scale. Who have, may have healthcare, but in many cases, as they've indicated, they used K D I S D as an example. Where K D I S D has good benefits, but individuals on the lower end of the spectrum from the pay scale, may not be able to afford the deductibles for their healthcare. And so what Christ Clinic does is they work with employers like that, and for forty dollars a month per employee, those employees can go to the doctor for five dollars. Additionally, they have, um, medications and other things where they can help people with tests, blood work, all the different things. So they, they help the property, the, the population in the community, the larger community. Who is most disadvantaged with, uh, medical expenses and medical care. They would like to meet the council and, and introduce themselves to the board and, and talk about they're coming out this direction to establish a location. And would like to be, help meet with some of the employers in the area to see how they might be able to help the citizens that live in this area and work in this area. So that's one I would highlight to and ask if the board would have any interest in, in meeting and, and touring their facilities and learning, it's actually a very, it's a, it certainly is faith-based. But it's very caring and compassionate organization that, that could benefit the community. Uh, so would, would the board have any interest in, in touring their facility and meeting with them?
How long have they been in Katy?
Twenty-five years.
Twenty-five years, wow.
And they're, they're expanding and, and locating, uh, into another location closer by there. The gentleman, um, who's, um, their outreach person, he's, boy, he's, he's like the Energizer Bunny. He's, uh, down in, and he's talking for Ben County, he's, people that I know in this industry elsewhere, man, he's everywhere, he's trying to get out and, and, and grow that business. And they make a lot through, or they, they're funded basically through, uh, contributions and things like that.
So it's a nonprofit?
Yes, sir, it's a charity hospital. So it's not a business to recruit from a, a growth standpoint, but it is an infrastructure thing that we looked about. And, and what I've heard from this board is we're looking about not only creating jobs, but taking care of individuals that, that may have some disadvantages. Well, this is a, a resource that's coming to the community, that it would be the opportunity to be aware of, they're not asking for money, they're not asking for support. Other than the opportunity to, to work with us and be aware and be familiar with it, so as it comes up, then it, it is something that can provide some benefit. Additionally, um, given some updates, um, on, uh, the Katy, uh, chamber. Reached out to the chamber, had a call, actually, I had worked with. Oh, for sure.
Before we leave that, that particular one, we didn't answer your question.
No, you didn't, I'm sorry, I, I got busy, thank you, thank you for pulling me back.
So, you know, I, I think it will be good for them, for this particular company to come before council, provide some literature. And let us, let us know, uh, uh, E D C or council, which, whichever one, and let us know what, you know. I mean, they've been there twenty-five years, so something's going on over there, if, if it's something that could be a benefit to the citizens of the community and the businesses. Would be a, a plus, you know. So you're gonna reach back out to them?
I will reach out to Jay.
Yeah.
If, if that's the approach, I'll reach out to Jay, and I'm sure he would be happy to come to city council. He, he likes to have people tour his facility because he's, you, you see what they have in place. But, uh, I think, you know, the, perhaps the best place to start is just with that conversation, then if there's interest, then you can take it further.
Okay, thank you.
Um, moved to the, the, the chamber, so following that conversation, I reached out to the Katy Chamber. And as it turns out, I had worked with the current president of the Chamber when he was working with the Fort Ben Chamber, so I knew him. And he's very helpful, they indicated that their approach toward working with the communities is, that they just do it as a general membership. Uh, until a community needs specific services, then they can work, but they would be most happy to come out here and do a similar conversation. To, to have a discussion with the board and the council as to the value of the membership, and, and if there were additional specific services. The city would like to engage, that go beyond the basic membership. So with that, what I'm going to include in your, your packet, next time, they're gonna send me information on those general services and set up a time. If you're amenable to do something similar at your, February meeting, to have them come and make a presentation.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Is that acceptable?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I've summarized the projects that are in there, the things that we're, we're working on. Additionally, um, President Green reached out to me, he had had a call from Mr. Sharma. He is the gentleman, as you may recall, that owns the property, that they were working with the developer to bring in Starbucks. So, um, Mr. Green called me, President Green called me and asked whether or not it was possible for Mr. Sharma to put in the road himself. And then be reimbursed at some point, and I explained to him that that's not uncommon, it's, you just typically do what's called a development agreement, you develop something. You do something with a public improvement under the conditions and terms the city sets out. And which you, when you do something else, which means this is the condition, you, Starbucks opens up, we'll reimburse you an agreed amount based on a certain process. So there is a way to get there, uh, since that call, I've been trying to reach out to Mr. Sharma, both by phone and, and email, he has not responded yet. But I'm pursuing that to see if we can bring that project back to life. And at least if nothing else, it would make a public improvement on someone else's dollars, where the city is not incurring the cost. And does not have to incur the cost until and unless the Starbucks actually opened up. So you would not have any financial exposure under this approach until and unless the conditions that you specified for the location of Starbucks, Starbucks occurred.
Starbucks, Starbur- Burks has not purchased the land, right?
No, sir, and that, and that's, and, and if you'll recall, and, and let me let you finish before I. They, they, they did not, the, well, Starbucks was never going to buy it, let's step back. We had a developer that was gonna build a building, and then Starbucks would lease it from them, and that developer backed out because they couldn't have the roadway. And Starbucks says, we got all these deals going, we're not gonna look at that one because it's not far enough along, we're going someplace else. So what the owner said is, listen, if the developer's not gonna put in the road, and the developer's not interested, if I put in the road, then I can go get another developer. Potentially, and then they'll come back and they can do the Starbucks deal, so what he's trying to do is he's, he's saying, okay, I may have the ability to sell my land. If I approve that roadway, then I can get to this developer, and then that will then lead to Starbucks. So if he's willing to gamble and take the risk financially, what you then enter in, you being the city, enter into an agreement that says, you can take the risk. And we don't owe you unless the things that you said you're gonna promise to deliver Starbucks under certain conditions happen. And that's the approach that we're now exploring, so we may hear more about that in, in, in future board meetings. The other, rather than go through something that you, you've ha- have in your packet, those are the major items I would highlight, and I'd be happy to answer any other questions that you may have. I would like to ask, um, on the strategic planning item, I think. Um, I'd like to look at that, well, I don't mean, for future agenda items, I'd like to talk about that next time, I'm gonna shut up and stay with the agenda item on. And, and deal with the ones in, 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 in their proper order, so that's, if you have any questions on this item, I'd be happy to answer them.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Empire West, I, I didn't cover that portion of it, just that we, that project is moving forward, the two that I highlighted, and we'll be bringing those. I had planned to bring some of that to, to council and executive session this evening, um, I, I did get an application, uh, last Friday. From, um, the big company, and, uh, legal is working on the agreement that we talked about for the other, uh, sales tax company. So things are in process with both of those.
Um, so, Project Gemini. So that's no longer in consideration, okay.
No, that, that one's gone, that's, that was the one that was looking at, um, Empire West. And they could not negotiate a proper, uh, a price that, that will fit into their, um, budget for the land.
Okay, Project Liquid Stone.
That's the one that the contract is being drafted, we talked about that one in executive session, which is the sales tax sharing. And so that one is moving forward, you will see it, you will see a draft agreement, and we'll be briefing council on that one as well. The agreement there would be between the city and the developer versus the B E D C, because of, it's a chapter three eighty approach versus, um, a performance agreement.
And the Project Electric Slide?
That one's the one I mentioned, I just got the, that's the big one.
Okay.
That's the one that I, that, that she'll go nameless, but you probably figure out what it is. Um, and, and that one is, uh, actually, I had a call with the county and them, two calls today, uh, on that one, it is moving forward. Uh, I believe where that, so here's where that one's gonna go. When I looked at, as you recall from our last conversation, the amount of free port exemption. Uh, we're just looking at a tax abatement and not any other exceptions, because that would just align us with the county. And would not have any B E D C funds, and so the, the benefit to that is, with a property tax abatement, should they not comply? Tax abatements have, um, clawback provisions that also have penalties that are, are, uh, that are there. That we presently don't necessarily have, and the other, easy to enforce, because they run with the land on a tax abatement. So it's, uh, we'll, we'll be working through the discussions and, and be briefing the board as we go forward. I would imagine that we'll have some draft terms, and we may be just sending out some conversations, updates to the board between now and then. Just to let you know that some things are moving forward, and we may be working, if, if the council has a, another meeting this month, then we may try to get on, on them to brief them as well. Other questions, please?
Okay, Groffles.
Yes, thank you, sir, so Groffles reached out, they're looking to expand, and we have not met with them yet. Um, but the county, Vince and I have, um, talked about it, and they're going to meet with them the next week and a half. To figure out what's going on with their project, their planning, and whether or not it's, it's a project that, that, that we'll be bringing for consideration. with their project, their planning, and whether or not it's a project that we'll be bringing for consideration. But we, they are looking to invest and expand their operations, which bring new capital investment and jobs, and I do not know how much it is yet.
They have land, extra land to, I mean, they're gonna expand their building?
Expand their building, I understand, yeah. Expand on site. And I think with the, come back to, remember the concern we had about losing the large project to up north? I think that we're in good shape to keep, to get this project.
That's Electric Slide?
Yes.
Okay.
I think that we're, we're doing well. I can't promise it, but right now, handicap, and I'm running at 70%.
So they gave you the extension because I remember January was the deadline date on that.
And they're, everything's moving slower with them. They didn't get us the application until January. And so that's, we're not the holdup is the, is the thing.
Okay. All right.
Got anything else?
On featured, on featured, future agenda items. As the board's liking, I would like to discuss with you at a future meeting what your vision for strategic planning is and some of the things that I would ask for consideration, just to put out for you, the board to consider, how we might plan for a program going forward. I think that, when you look at Brookshire, you're in a growth pattern. You're on I-10. You have land, you have opportunities. To take advantage of those, we need to be thoughtful and prioritize how to use the land, how to use limited resources. There are a lot of things that this corporation can do that has flexibility to support the city. More, I believe, than the revenues that you have. And so prioritizing and identifying what is important to this body and to the city council, I think is of critical importance. And then developing a plan, one of the things that I've heard since I've had these conversations is there's concern upon this board about the documentation and ensuring that the plans that you have in place are carried out and taken care of. Well, to do that, we need, we have to, if I don't have a map of telling me where I'm going, how do I know when I've arrived? And so I'm looking forward to help support y'all with some of that conversation. And I agree with your, what you brought up, and I'd like to expand on that.
I understand that and we, and as Mr. Stamps mentioned, we tabled the strategic plan right now because, and it's needed, we know. I mean, retail is important to us, okay, first of all, in this area. But, and we know about the growth, all the open land and the growth. But right now, these particular projects that you're working on right now, we just want to see some of those, in my opinion, come to fruition. Okay? The Electric Slide project, all of the ones that we mentioned here, we would like to see some of those come to fruition first. And we can still do, we can multitask. We can work on strategic plan, but you have some good viable projects right here that I, that we know, that I know that you can get completed and done. And so, and, you know, along the lines of strategic plan, we can map that out too. But right now, I would focus more on getting these done right here.
I'm not suggesting to you that I would replace one with the other. All I'm asking for is when you get to the point where you'd like to have that conversation, I would welcome the opportunity to join in that conversation because I'm agreeing with the things that you've stated and trying to see how I can support in addition to, not in replacement of those projects. So I'm not suggesting that I would switch a strategic plan for Electric Slide or any of Liquid Stone.
Right.
These are in addition to.
Absolutely.
So we're on the same page, sir.
Okay, good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you. Alrighty, agenda item number 12, future agenda items.
I don't have any at this moment. Nothing at this moment.
Wow, okay. I do have just one, just, I would like some type of update on, I know we budgeted for several projects. I know Hovis was one of them, but we talked about the Rock and we talked about the museum and several other things. So if we can just get some type of update on any of our owner bids. I don't know, we've been out for the museum, bids on the lawn and mowing and lawn. We don't know, just update on those projects.
Okay.
We can discuss those later. That's all I have. Do we need to go into executive session?
I would like to.
You'd like to go into executive session?
I would like to discuss something.
Okay. Agenda item number 13, executive session. The Brookshire Economic Development Corporation will meet in a closed session pursuant to, oh, can we go without the attorney?
He will be available by phone if needed, attorney.
Okay, I was just saying, can we go without the attorney?
Yes.
Okay, okay, sorry. The Brookshire Economic Development Corporation will meet in a closed session pursuant to Title V, Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code for the Purpose of Economic Development, discussions under, wait, sorry, under Section 551.087, consultation with legal counsel under Section 551.01, deliberation on real property under Section 551.072, and deliberations on personnel under Section 551.074. Executive session, ma'am.
[inaudible]